I'd like to call to order the September 22nd meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Cassali.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Wexmanzki.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
By Dallo, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the September 8th meeting. Again, if there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Support.
Moved by Dallo, support by Appone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, first item, a letter from Jaclyn Bassis, Dog Day Care Services. Mr. Nguyen.
Chairman, we had met with Mrs. Bassis regarding the potential for opening a dog daycare service business in the township and the, this would be in a light manufacturing district. We do allow similar activities in C2, and this would include dog care, grooming, pet supplies, a whole range of services, also dog daycare and some overnight facilities on a limited basis. So they're looking at an LM district, and in that particular zoning district, we allow indoor recreation and instructional activities. We also allow other uses as determined by the planning director. This seems like an appropriate location for this type of use, where you have it more isolated from residential in a setting that I think with a building would be more compatible for that type of activity. So it was my conclusion that that would be permitted in that district, but I wanted to just verify it with the commission before we had Mrs. Bassis go and get a lease agreement and then file a certificate of zoning compliance. But if you agree, there's a motion here to that effect, plus I think we would include that in our next series of zoning text amendments, because it's a logical use.
Yeah, it seems more appropriate, frankly, prior than. Is the, is Ms. Bassis here?
I am.
If you want to come on up real quick. I just have one question for you. How large of a space are you looking to lease?
The building that I'm actually looking at right now is 11,800 square foot.
Okay. Which probably is a lot, be a lot easier to find than...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Any questions? Questions for the planner? Okay, seeing none, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Cassali.
I'd like to make a motion to concur with the determination by the planning director that animal services, as described in this proposal, may be allowed in the light manufacturing district. The planning and zoning department is further instructed to include this in the next series of zoning ordinance amendments. Support.
Okay, moved by Cassali, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexmanzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next we have three public hearings this evening. The first, rezoning petition number 06-14, James Billett, requesting a change from an O1 zoning to an R2. Ms. Moore, would you read the public, the publication, please?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant: James Billett, 5600 Auburn Road, Utica, Michigan, 48317. Rezoning request: O1 professional office to R2 two-family residential. Location: South side of Speedway Drive, east of Van Dyke, 8090 Speedway. Sidwell number 23-07-27-351-002. Legal description is as follows: The planning commission will meet on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. It was published in the Shelby Utica News on September 3rd, 2014. There were 64 property owners and nine utilities were notified on September 4th, 2014.
Great, thank you. Ms. Dennewith, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. To the secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. The commissioner may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner will make concluding remarks. At this point, is a petitioner or representative here? And if I could get your name and address for the record?
Richard Sable, and 48723 Hayes Road in Shelby. Mr. Billett couldn't be here, and he asked me to be here on his behalf. This is quite a simple rezoning request for a parcel of property that's off of Speedway and off of Fontana. This parcel of property is right adjacent to the east of the Arby's Restaurant. Right across the street of, on Fontana Drive is two duplex buildings, and the whole goal is to make a duplex building compatible with the ones across the street. Okay, so you have any questions?
Okay, great. Thank you. To the, to the board, any questions?
Mr. Chair, question to the petitioner. Is your intent to have brick siding?
Yes.
All around, or just front?
To be compatible with what across the street is.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this rezoning request. The remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. The planning commission is a recommending body. The township board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. Anyone in the audience or group spokesperson is now welcome to speak or comment on this issue. Is there anyone that wishes to address this issue? Going once, going twice, three times? Okay, to the planner, Mr. Nguyen, your comments.
Chairman, this is what I would call a really classic transitional site. You have the retail along Van Dyke that abuts to the west. You have a single-family neighborhood further to the east, and you have a duplex site next to it. And two of the best transitional zoning classifications are either O1 or R2. The O1 may be a little bit problematic here because you don't have visibility from Van Dyke, and sometimes you need that exposure to make O1 work. So in the absence of that, I think the O2 is almost, is an ideal situation. It's almost a perfect zoning application. We rarely see things line up this neatly. There's a recommendation we've offered supporting it along with the motion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, appropriate to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our decision on this request must be based on the following: the practicality of the rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. At this point, we may recommend approval, disapprove, or table the request to evaluate it further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I'd like to recommend approval to the township board of rezoning petition number 6-14 for James Billett for parcel number 23-07-27-351-002 to be rezoned from O1 professional office to R2 two-family residential for the following reasons. The proposed change in zoning is consistent with the recommendations contained in the township's adopted master plan and surrounding development patterns. Number two, the R2 zoning district provides an appropriate transition to the predominantly residential neighborhood along Speedway Drive to the east of the site. Number three, the change in rezoning represents an extension of the existing R2 zoning classification on the adjoining parcel. Number four, the lack of Van Dyke frontage and exposure limits the viability of the site for a professional office use. And number five, the proposed zoning change would not adversely impact any abutting development.
Support.
Okay, moved by Moore, support by Vier. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexmanzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next item, public hearing, again, also a public hearing. Site plan number 14-30, PUD number dash six, Joe Cardona, Lakeside Boulevard Homes. Madam Secretary, would you read the notes?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following planned unit development. Applicant: Joe Cardona, Lakeside Boulevard Homes, 59219 Van Dyke, Washington Township, Michigan, 48094. Proposed use: multiple family community. Location: North side of Lakeside Boulevard between Shaner Road and Hayes Road. Sidwell number 23-07-36-300-079 and 23-07-36-400-071. Legal description is as follows: The planning commission will meet on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the planned unit development application. The application for planned unit development and the site plan may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. It was published in the Shelby Utica News on September 3rd, 2014. There were 59 property owners and nine utilities were notified on September 4th, 2014.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dennewith, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it does.
Okay. And could you explain uses under the present zoning, and if the special land use request is appropriate to this district?
Yes, the C5 zoning district is set forth under Section 10.70 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinance. The multiple-family residential district is set forth under Section 9.40 of Shelby Township zoning ordinance. This, plans for this site were actually previously reviewed on June, in June 2014 and August of 2014. The planned unit development review is set forth under Section 13.37 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinance, subject to site plan review in Article 7, Section 7.02. This is an appropriate application.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then finally, the petitioner can make concluding remarks. At this point, is the petitioner representative here? And if I could get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Joe Cardona, 59219 Van Dyke, Washington, Michigan, 48094.
Okay.
We come before you with a condominium apartment project in Lakeside Boulevard Drive. We are just west of the Lifetime Fitness Center. The property did have the master PUD plan, which we tried to concur with that as much as possible. It actually showed higher density on there, but with the wetlands, we were just going to fit the amount of units we could without impacting the wetlands to the minimum possible. And we're using a town style, townhome style unit that is also in as much compliance as we can concur with the requirements that were recorded on this property for the original master plan or PUD plan. They're approximately 1,350 square feet. The end units are a little bigger. They're two and three-bedroom units, all have a one-car garage, and we feel that it fits in with the community over there really well, that there is a need for this in the area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the board? Okay, seeing none. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on this special land use request. At this time, anyone from the audience is free to, to come up and ask questions, offer their comments. Does anyone want to address this issue? Going once, okay, sir. I would just need your name and address and free to sign in, please. Yep, come on up.
My name is Marcos Plaza, 54352 Merkel Lane, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316. I actually own a unit in the existing condo structure across from Lifetime Fitness on the south side. I was just curious about the influx of volume. I know Market Street leading in right there. It's already kind of a sketchy area where people come through really fast, cut through from Hayes to Shaner. How is this going to impact that?
Okay. Does anyone else wishes to address this issue? Going once, going twice, okay. Mr. Nguyen. What I'm going to do is have him come up after all the comments are been done, and then I'll answer.
This is the second step of the PUD process, so we're looking at a very detailed site plan. The design and what he's proposing is identical to what we saw earlier. There's a few minor submission issues that we, and I'm not going to read all these, but just kind of highlight the major issues. The buildings at front on Lakeside Boulevard don't beat the front yard setback if you apply the, to standards for the multiple family. However, the setback is consistent with what we're trying to achieve in the surrounding development, the one across the street and the live-work units. And as part of the PUD process, we can modify those standards. It'd be my recommendation that we accept the setback as it's presented. Buildings C, D, and G do not fully observe the 50-foot side yard setback, or perimeter setback, and there is room to adjust those modestly, with the wetlands maybe a little less. I'm not really strongly opposed to what they're proposing. If they can jog them a little bit, that would be fine. If they can't, I don't think it really impacts any of their surrounding development. Certainly not Lifetime Fitness to the other side, nor the, the planned redwood units to the, to the west. We suggested they maybe consider some, a little, a little additional visitor parking, maybe between buildings E and F, if there's some room there. They did put a couple of small fields in there, but they may need a little more. They, they do comply with the parking requirements. And I think there'd be some benefit for some internal sidewalks, at least to provide a connection to the public sidewalk on Lakeside Boulevard. So a couple of locations where they might put at least parallel to the Boulevard entrance coming in, so people can walk comfortably in the back road and then down to Lakeside Boulevard. Other than that, there's a few minor other corrections that we'd have them follow up on, but again, I think they're ready for an approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. If you want to come back up?
Mr. Chairman, just to address the traffic issue?
Okay.
You and I had met with Bob Hoffner at the Department of Roads, and this design may have reached a point where it needs to be upgraded, that intersection, that T-intersection. And we've, we need to, we've had some preliminary discussions about some redesign, and we may need to continue that, because the point that was raised is a valid one. There may be some adjustments that the road commission can make there. One of the problems is Market Street's a private road, so...
We also are aware of that. We have spoke with Mr. Nguyen about it, and it is an association that he's a member of, the co-owners of theirs, and there's a private road, and there's a ownership of the Market Street still. And I believe that we'd be willing to cooperate if everybody else can get together and do something to accomplish those improvements. But we're just one small piece of a large puzzle there to make that happen.
Okay.
As for the sidewalk issue too, I was just, we're fine with adding the sidewalks coming in along the Boulevard entrance as well.
Okay. How about visitor, additional visitor parking?
You know, we, there's a piece of property that's landlocked to the north of us, and they had asked that maybe one day we, we left in accordance with the original plan that was there, the PUD plan. We kind of left that space there so that we could put a road in one day, if they were able to obtain a crossing through the wetlands. But in the interim, we have no problem adding additional parking in that area.
Okay, all right. Now, maybe in addition to his question on the impact on traffic, how many, how many units are your...
These are 56 units. Again, this site, if you look at the original plan, was somewhere over 500 units on the site. So it's, it's about one-tenth of what could be here. And you know, these are higher-end units, one-car garages. I think that will be consistent, you know, with the flows that are happening on the road now.
Okay. And just so you know, we talked to Mr. Hoffner, who's the chairman, the director of roads on, was, you know, just the possibility of maybe putting a traffic circle at Market and Lakeside Boulevard, and that, you know, to slow it down, and maybe even, you know, we've even thought of, you know, there's been discussions to put one farther down to ease the, the traffic that comes, you know, in and out of there, and also to sort of slow it down a little bit, down to 35. So, so now, the township is very sensitive to that, you know, being an issue, so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Okay. Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Our basis for our recommendation must be on, on the following: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. With that, we may recommend approval, disapprove, the request, or table it further. Chairman? Mr. Vier.
I move to recommend approval to the township board for planned unit development application number 14-30, PUD 6, Lakeside Boulevard Homes, to permit the development of this site for an attached multiple-family development based on the following findings. Number one, this project is consistent with the existing development pattern along Lakeside Boulevard. Number two, the development of this site will not adversely impact any abutting uses. And number three, a revised site plan must be submitted to the planning and zoning department that addresses all department comments. Modification to the R6 standards are accepted as part of the PUD approval.
Support.
Okay, moved by, by Vier, support by Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexmanzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, public hearing on the rezoning request number 07-14 and site plan number 14-29, Sam Biondo, Salmar, from R8 to R12. Madam Secretary, would you read the notices published?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant: Sam Biondo, Salmar, 50258 Van Dyke, Suite B, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48317. Rezoning request: R8 multiple-family low-rise to R12 multiple-family low-rise with conditions: 144 attached multiple-family units. Location: West side of Van Dyke between 25 Mile Road and 26 Mile Road. Sidwell number 23-07-04-426-015. Legal description is as follows: The planning commission will meet on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in Shelby Utica News on September 3rd, 2014. There were 186 property owners, nine utilities, and three applicants were notified on September 4th, 2014.
Great, thank you. Ms. Dennewith, did the legal, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Format for this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner will be allowed to make concluding remarks. At this point, is the petitioner representative here? And if I could get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Bill Mosher. Address is 2959 Rambling Way, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48302. Also here is Kevin Brandon, and we're here on behalf of the petitioner. We do come before you this evening to seek a favorable recommendation on a conditional rezoning request from R8 to R12. We have a 14-acre parcel that is currently zoned R8. Parcel is located on the west side of Van Dyke between 25 and 26. To the south of the project is Ambassador, existing Ambassador Village condominium project. To the north and the west, zoned R1B, a single-family subdivision is currently under construction to the west. To the north of the property, there are a few multifamily buildings located on a piece of property that's zoned R1B. And north of that, along Van Dyke, there's approximately six or 700 feet of commercial C1 zone property to the north. On the east side of Van Dyke, across the parcel, along the entire frontage is zone C1 also. As you are all well aware, Van Dyke and that area is under construction, and it's going to be finalized as a five-lane road. We are proposing eight 18-plex buildings. They're three stories each. Each unit has an individual entrance to ground level with an one-car attached garage and one space dedicated in front of that driveway. We have, we'll have 144 units. The building is approximately 200 feet by 84 feet for a 13,000-square-foot footprint. There are three unit types within each building. They're all two- and three-bedroom units. There's a ranch unit. There's a two-story unit, and then there's also a raised two-story unit. The sizes range from 1,303 square feet to 1,682 square feet. Parking requirement is 324 spaces. 288 are met right at the garage in the driveway, and there are an additional 68 spaces throughout the development for 356 spaces total. We have provided two male kiosks, one for each side of the drain, a gazebo along the drain, and like a pseudo-garret house at the entrance. The Shuki Drain traverses the site, poses some design limitations therefore, and we try to keep as many buildings parallel to the drain as possible than around the perimeter. We are proposing to fill approximately one-third of an acre of low-quality existing wetlands. Basically, you can see along Van Dyke, we have to fill that to get into the site. There's approximately one and a quarter acres of open space, not including the perimeter setback of 50 feet, and if you include the drain, it increases to 2.6 acres, which is nearly 20% of the site. One of the concerns from Mr. Nguyen is that the front yard setbacks on the proposed plan do not meet the ordinance requirements. If you look at the building, the ends are closer to the road. We have those proposed at 15 feet, but if you do a prorated setback analysis, it's actually 24 feet, when you take account of all the jogs. This allows us to eliminate the driveways along that interior road coming in the site, so the driveways are to the rear. We feel we've provided a desired and also needed housing type within the community, and offer a unique design, and using as many natural features as we possibly can, and be happy to address any concerns or answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nguyen, I'm going to call on you, because I think there are a number of issues on this, so...
I've had quite a bit of time, I spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Mosher at the counter talking about this, along with Mr. Brandon, and, well, I don't have any particular strong objection to increasing the density, because you have multiple family next to it, and you're on Van Dyke. The difference between the R8 and the R12 is really a number of units, and if you actually compute this, it's more like an R11 than an R12, based on the numbers. The bigger concern is, are they complying with all the ordinance standards, and whether the site can comfortably absorb all those additional units and still meet all the ordinance standards? So, you have quite a few comments on here, and I, this is pretty, this is actually a fairly complicated site, and I don't want to read them all, I just want to highlight some of the more, I think, salient ones. One is... One is, we'd like to get a copy of the wetland report, so that's in the files to validate Mr. Mosher's conclusions. Building five is located right on the drain easement, and having worked with the building department often enough in the past, when you see that kind of relationship, when there's no tolerance, it leaves very little room for, for any sort of, or any margin of error. So, to me, that was a bit of a flag that perhaps the site may be a little bit overbuilt for this, or maybe some adjustment needs to be made. As Mr. Mosher indicated, there's single-family subdivision that's not completed yet to the east, to the west of this, and he'd like to show those lots, so you have a reference as well as some additional plantings, I think, will be necessary along there. We haven't, we're not, we're not able to fully validate that all the R twelve district requirements have been met. There's a requirement for open space. Typically, we'd like to see that shown separately on a separate sheet to see if we would give them credit for everything. Just because it's a drain doesn't mean you're going to get credited for the open space. As Mr. Mosher indicated, there's some portions of the building that don't meet that twenty-five-foot setback between the building and a parking or driveway area. There are portions of the site that far exceed that, though, too, so it's just a matter of how they've designed this. There is a standard in the ordinance, and this is pretty common with any ordinance I've seen in all my career, that multiple buildings are not allowed to exceed one-hundred-and-eighty feet. I don't know what historically, what, what the basis of that was, but it, every ordinance I've seen says one-hundred-and-eighty feet. I think it has to do with massing of the buildings, and twenty feet more isn't substantial, but on top of everything else, it may be. The other item was the gatehouse encroaches into the front yard setback, and my experience with gatehouses is they're, they're a visual amenity, nothing more, and I think they're almost unnecessary. Some of the other standards have verified the fire hydrant location, that's from the Fire Department, and apparently, if the buildings aren't suppressed, fire's suppressed, then they'd have to have another access drive. So, again, I, I think the site plan has a lot of merit, I think the proposal has merit, but I think the applicant may need a little more time to kind of fine-tune these things, and kind of see if they can meet compliance with as many standards as possible before they seek some relief through the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it has a lot of merit, and I think it's worth seriously considering.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any, do the commissioners have any questions of the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waxmanzki.
To the petitioner, will these units have basements?
Excuse me, no, they will not.
Okay. What's your confidence level that there would be no flooding in the event of extreme rains that we've been having, being so close to drainage in this area, being main part of drain system?
They'll have to meet the engineering requirements of the township, as well as the county. We want to keep the drain as natural as possible. However, the Drain Office, Macomb County Office of Public Works, Drain Office, will have considerable input on our stormwater taps, our detention sizing, our infiltration requirements, as well as any, to prevent any downstream flooding.
Because, I mean, once you sell these units, flooding is now the problem of the property owner, right?
Correct, yeah. There are plenty of safeguards through the engineering process.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vire.
When you take out the wetlands and the drain, what do you have left in acreage?
Good question. It's, it's eleven acres.
About eleven acres. You propose to put a hundred and...
Forty-four.
Hundred-and-forty-four?
Correct.
What is that equation? Seven acres, a four, a hundred-and-forty-four units on eleven acres?
More than twelve. More than twelve per acre.
More than twelve?
Thirteen, yeah, twelve, thirteen.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Marks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. Anyone in the audience or group spokesperson is now welcome to speak in support of the project or against the project, or ask questions, or just, you know, do a comment. Is there anyone here wish to offer a comment? Go on once, go on twice. Back to the board. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Support.
More support by Dalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our decision on this proposed rezoning must be based on the following: the practicality of the rezoning request, and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant the rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. We may recommend approval, disapprove, or table this request to evaluate the information we received this evening. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casale.
I move to postpone further consideration of conditional rezoning application number zero-seven dash one-four, and site plan application fourteen dash two-nine, until a revised plan addressing all of the department comments is submitted.
Support.
Okay, moved by Casale, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Casale.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Waxmanzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Pone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vire.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay.
I apologize for lack of boards. We, the printer closed earlier, and thank Mr. Nguyen for providing his site plan copy and...
He is nothing but resourceful.
Very good.
Okay. Next, under old business, right? Yep. Rezoning application number zero-five dash one-four, and site plan number one-four dash two-six, DeLuzzo Building Company, Villas of Grandeur, number two.
Good evening. My name is Bill Thompson from Leder Vinland Associates, representing DeLuzzo Building Company this evening. We met, was it two weeks ago? Okay. Received comments from the Planning Commission, and we made some revisions of the plan. I think we've satisfied the requirements of the Planning Commission and the Planning Director. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Nguyen, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, Mr. Thompson's correct. They did make some substantial changes. They widened the road to add some parking on one side. That's, that's a real benefit. Showed the building envelopes a little more clearly. I think you can see how things fit here a little better. Added a sidewalk on the south side. You know, we, we observed from the initial project that, because this is kind of a hybrid form of development, there are other issues, and this gave us a chance to kind of recalibrate it, and kind of fix some of the flaws, and I think it works in everybody's benefit. So, they do, they will require a variance, which I received for the first phase, for the spacing between units. And we'll have to verify, again, just the design calculations for the retention basin and the Fire Department's hammerhead turnaround to make sure those work. See, Bill's got a little different design than I have in mind, but those are minor details at this point. I think they did a really good job of listening carefully to what the commission and the residents had to say, and adjusting their plan accordingly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And to the commissioners, any questions of the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Nguyen. The, the site is fourteen, fourteen feet, the one that is required, and we have, is that fourteen feet from the, the one unit to the site?
Yes.
Then make it twenty-eight feet.
No, it's, no, it's fourteen, it's fourteen feet.
Total.
Oh, yeah, it would be, yeah.
Twenty-eight.
Well, no, in this case, no, it wouldn't be. It would be, the side yard setback in this district, if, the way the ordinance reads, it says, in a two-family district, if you're going to build single-family, they have to meet the R one-C requirement, which is seven feet on each, on each side, so it's seven and seven is fourteen.
Yes.
So...
The, the proposed is a ten-foot, and...
Yes.
I'm seeing it as very near to each other. I mean, there's literally, somebody could reach onto somebody else's window, that's...
Use that standard for the small-lot, single-family, and Central Park development, and this one. Your points will take it, Mr. Dalu, but it's a hybrid form of development, and typically you don't have many windows on those side walls to, it kind of mitigates that, that privacy issue, but I understand your point.
That does mirror what's, what's already existed.
It does mirrors across the street, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, I was just trying to see on, I think it's page three or four, where the sidewalk is called out on here, I can...
It's very near the sanitary sewer, it's kind of hard to pick off the lines, but there's a five-foot sidewalk located, I believe it's ten foot south of the edge of the parking areas.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bernardi, is that, do you have anything else?
That, yes, thank you.
There was, in the last meeting, there was a concern about the traffic to enter. Have we ever addressed that traffic issue to how people go into that road?
Mr. Chairman.
That was a big concern.
I think they did. I think they changed the radius of the curb at the entrance. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. Originally, the original road layout reflected the fact that the property to the south was a separate owner, and so they had to curve the road a little bit to get in. Now that we own that property, we straightened it out, so the south curb is straight. We're adding some concrete at the intersection and revising it, so that people coming in have a ninety-degree turn instead of a hundred-and-ten.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Moore.
I'd like to recommend approval to the Township Board of Conditional Rezoning Application...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am, did you want to comment on this?
No.
Okay, no problem, okay. Go ahead, sorry. We'll get to you.
To recommend approval to the Township Board of Conditional Rezoning Application, five dash fourteen, and site plan application fourteen dash twenty-six, for the Villas of Grandeur Two, for the following reasons. Number one, the rezoning of the site requires the completion of an amendment, conditional zoning agreement linking the rezoning of the site to the site plan accompanying this application. Number two, the property is located on the dividing line between industrial and residential zoning districts. Number three, the proposed development plan represents a continuation of the established development pattern to the north. Number four, the site cannot be reasonably developed for industrial purposes. And number five, the development of the site for industrial purposes would adversely impact the abutting single-family homes to the north.
Support.
By Moore, support by DeCicco. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner Casale.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Waxmanzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Pone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vire.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, Planning Director's Report.
I don't have anything to report right now.
Okay, duly noted. Okay, and now, business from the floor, ma'am. If you want to make fun of Mr. Nguyen, you can do that, too. If I could get your name and your address.
Okay, I'm Sylvia Kokosa. I live on Flintlock Ridge Road in Shelby Township.
Could I ask you to maybe pull that microphone down a little? Thank you.
Sylvia Kokosa, I live at Flintlock Ridge Road on Shelby Township. I'm here to talk about the Shelby Township Park Ordinance, specifically prohibitions and restrictions, malicious destruction. You all have a copy of it. As you can see on the ordinance, it's the green arrow. Numbers one and number four, numbers one is restrooms and washrooms, and number four wildlife, begin with the words "no person." But when you look at numbers two, facilities and property, and number three, trees, shrubbery, and lawns, they begin with the words "no unauthorized person." Although the difference in wording sounds minor, the impact is large. The impact of the words "unauthorized" allowed Shelby's park director to give permission to a charity group to go into Riverbends and Wood Hall Neighborhood Parks and commit a hundred-and-twenty separate acts of vandalism with spray paint. In order to mark the course for their ten-k and five-k races, this group used bright yellow spray paint to scrawl one, two, and three-mile markers for the ten-k race in letters a foot-high across the park's eight-foot bike pass. Along the nature trail in Riverbends, they spray painted bull's eyes on the trunks of the trees with fluorescent orange paint. With fluorescent orange paint to indicate the one- and three-mile distance for the five-k race, and the five- and six-mile distance for the ten-k race, with four different trees. Additionally, they spray painted dozens of arrows and other instructions all over the five- and ten-k courses with temporary and permanent paint. As I stated above, the total was a hundred-and-twenty separate markings across four trails and two parks. The Metro Park Stony Creek rules on this subject are clear. No person is allowed to deface any park property. There's no such thing as an unauthorized person, it is no person. I want the language fixed, so that the rules, so that no one is ever allowed in Riverbends Park or Wood Hall Neighborhood Park again with a can of spray paint. Finally, I think it's disgraceful, the way Shelby Township officials have conducted themselves in this manner. The lack of respect for the people who use those parks and live in the neighborhoods around those parks is appalling and shameful. Shelby officials have a duty to protect public property, and yet they let their friends come in and trash the place. Next time, invite them to your neighborhoods to spray paint your sidewalks, driveways, and trees, and see if you think that was for a good reason. I want this ordinance fixed. The next time a parks director allows anybody to come into this, our parks, and do something like that, he shouldn't be worried about getting his performance bonus, he should be worried about keeping his job.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, ma'am. All right, Mr. Vire.
I doubt if this body would have any relevance to your complaint.
They...
Do you have every right to come to the Board of Trustees and bring up your complaints?
Oh, I intend to.
But this body has no jurisdiction over the, what you're talking about, so I think you're just wasting our time.
You do...
Okay, ma'am. You're, you've, I've allowed you to exceed your time, so, thank you.
Okay, but I just want to say that you are responsible for, I've watched these meetings, and you go through the ordinances. You recently went through a whole slew of ordinances...
And you've, and you've made your point.
And you need to change the language in that ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out that this, this isn't part of the zoning ordinance, this is a separate regulatory ordinance. As Mr. Vire correctly pointed out, the board could make those changes, but this body does not have that jurisdiction. That's an accurate statement.
I think it's, it's still disgraceful.
I'll pass this on to Mr. Youngblood and to the board.
Okay.
You have made your point to Mr. Youngblood through the emails, is that true?